Mr. Kelly, how are you? Good evening. Mr. Ty, we're doing pretty good here, huh? Got one lady showing up?
Anna.
Anna, one out of three? Well, Deborah's usually...
What? I heard my name.
You're welcome.
What?
One out of three. My woman on the board, I only got one.
One that matters, no.
There you go. Oh, now we got two. And on time, look at that.
There you go.
Listen, the bell didn't ring, you're on time.
Can't move as quick in the cold weather.
I just see that. Sorry?
Your packet.
Thank you, yes.
Yes, we are. Good evening. If we could all rise. Mr. McAdon, could you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are we going to swear? The decedent, alright, let's do a roll call. Do we have, um, has this meeting been publicly notified?
Yes, Chairman, it has.
Very much. You could have a roll call.
Mr. Hakevich.
Here.
Councilman Delena.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Ms. Lee.
Here.
Mr. McAdon.
Present.
Ms. O'Leary.
Here.
Mr. Velosin. Ms. Matilla. Chairman Ty.
Here.
Mr. Rogoff. Mr. Cornell.
Mr. Leo Cavall.
Here.
We have a call.
At this time, we're going to swear in Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis, pay attention. You've got to get over there, go ahead. Dave, is your right hand? Will you, Robert Davis, swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Virginia to bear true faith in the Constitution of the Senate? The governments established in the United States of the state be required to be people. You faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all duties. Our ultimate one, member of the party, who are for two-year term expiring in 12/31/2020 according to the principles of God. Congratulations. Thank you for serving, Mr. Davis. Mark his second to get back to where he belongs. It says to do the two resolutions first, so that's what we'll do. We have two resolutions to approve tonight, and one is for Robert Downey III. Second, Block 337, Lot 2.02. What's your favor on that?
I make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Any questions on that memorialization of the resolution? If not, I'll have a vote.
Mr. Hakevich.
Yes.
Councilman Delena.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Ms. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. McAdon.
Yes.
Ms. O'Leary.
Yes.
Granted, approved.
Alright, and the next resolution we have is for the CPV Keyesby LLC. I have a motion to make that resolution, to approve that.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Second.
Have any questions on that? If not, I'll take a roll call.
Mr. Hakevich.
Yes.
Councilman Delena.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Ms. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. McAdon.
Yes.
Ms. O'Leary.
Yes.
Thank you. And now, I need a motion to pass the minutes for the 2000, for the January 16th, 2019 meeting. You've all received them. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as printed?
I'll make that motion to approve the minutes.
I have a second to approve those minutes.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion made in second. Do I have any questions on the minutes of January 16th, 2019? Seeing none, I'll have a roll call.
Mr. Hakevich.
Yes.
Councilman Delena.
Yes.
Ms. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. McAdon.
Yes.
Ms. O'Leary.
Yes.
Minutes approved.
Communications?
None.
On seeing that, we'll do the Ross Manuzzo subdivision on 49 Deerfield Road.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members. My name is Michael Page, and I'm the attorney for the applicants, Ms. Christina Ross and Ms. Donna Muniz. I've previously submitted the requisite jurisdictional documents to the Board Secretary's office containing the affidavit of publication, affidavit of mailing, together with the certified list of property owners and the certified mail receipts and the green return cards with regard to the required notices.
I reviewed them, and I find that they're in order. I would just make one minor suggestion. That in your notice, when you refer to variances for lot area and lot width, give the dimensions. Tell us what's the minimum required, what you're proposing. So if the members of the public, when they see that, they understand the nature of the variances you're seeking.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, this is an application for minor subdivision and minor site plan approval to allow the applicants to subdivide the property into two new lots and to construct a single-family residence on each of the two new lots, together with variances for lot area and lot width. With regard to this application, I will be calling three witnesses to testify. Ms. Christina Ross, who is the owner of Lot 21, which is the subject of this application. Ms. Donna Muniz, who is owner of Lot 22, with regard to the application. And also Mr. Michael Geller, professional engineer and professional planner of Geller, Seive and Company, as the applicant's professional engineer and planner with regard to the matter. So, without further ado...
Before that, just a few housekeeping things. I just want to acknowledge your receipt. They make a part of the record, the professional reports that have been generated in this matter. That would be the report from CME Associates dated February 13, 2019. And the report from John Leon Cavallo dated February 11, 2019. I ask that you agree to make those reports a part of the record, enter them into evidence. Certainly, if you had any questions of those professionals that are here tonight, you can ask them any questions that you want. It is set forth in their reports. Is that acceptable to you?
Absolutely.
Are there any other reports? Alright, thank you.
Thank you. First, I'd like to call Ms. Christina Ross.
Now, Matt's swearing in. Can you raise your right hand? To testify about to give the Board in this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as I beg your pardon.
I do.
Ms. Ross, you're the owner of Block 204.04, Lot 21?
Yes.
Which is the subject of this application?
Yes.
And you purchased this property back in April of 2018?
Yes.
And at the time you purchased the property, you were advised that Block 204, 204.04, Lot 21, was a property in and of its own, separate and apart from Block 204.04, Lot 22?
Yes.
And at the time you purchased the property, it was your purpose and intent to build upon and improve the subject property?
Yes.
But when you required of the borough in doing so, you were advised that you needed to obtain a subdivision as to Lots 21 and 22?
Yes.
Is that correct? And that is why you've now come before the Board here, asking for the Board's approval to subdivide the property, that is Lots 21 and 22, into two separate and distinct properties, and to allow you to build a new single-family home on each of those properties?
Yes.
I have no further questions for Ms. Ross.
Anybody of the Board have any questions of the owner of Lot 21?
What is the neighborhood, the size of the lots in the neighborhood, you know, as, how do they compare to the size of the lot that you're proposing to make? Because you're asking for two variances, where 7,500 square feet is required, and you're, you know, going down to 5,000.
I believe our engineer and planner is going to testify as to those things.
So you have those figures?
Yes, yes.
Good.
Yes, we do.
Any other questions? If not, if you could bring on, thank you very much. Bring up your next witness.
Next question, next witness is Donna Muniz.
Anyone want to raise your right hand? Swear the testimony about to give the Board in this matter the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as I beg your pardon.
I do.
And Ms. Muniz, you're the owner of Block 204.04, Lot 22, which is the subject of this application, correct?
Yes.
And you purchased this property as well back in April of 2018?
Yes.
And at the time you purchased this property, you were advised that Block 204.04, Lot 22, was a property in and of its own, separate and apart from Block 204.04, Lot 21?
Yes.
And at the time you purchased the property, was it your purpose and intent to build upon and improve the subject property?
Yes.
But again, when you also required of the borough to do so, you were advised that you needed to get a subdivision between Lots 21 and 22 before you could go ahead and move forward with your plan.
That's correct.
And so now here you are, as well as with Ms. Ross, coming before the Planning Board, asking for the Board's approval to subdivide the properties, Lots 21 and 22, into two separate and distinct properties, so as to allow you to build a new home upon Lots 21 and 22. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
I have no further questions for you.
I have an inquiry. Does anybody know if the two lots that were, that the two women just testified that they purchased, were formerly under the same ownership?
I believe that they were. That's, that's the reason why we're...
Is your, is, is your planner prepared to testify about, are we talking about a merger here? If you have two separate, distinct lots that were under common ownership? The reason somebody told them they needed a subdivision was because there was a merger?
That's correct.
Is, are you gonna, is the planner gonna tell us about that?
Yes.
And I'll save my comment for that.
No further questions.
Thank you.
So now we're gonna get down to the guy who's gonna tell us everything.
Exactly.
Alright.
Next, I'd like to call Mr. Michael Geller, who'll be testifying.
Can you give us his credentials when he comes up?
Before I get sworn in? Somebody gets sworn in first?
Yeah, you're gonna give us your credentials, and then we'll swear you in.
Okay.
Tom, I need to swear him in first. So raise your right hand.
Oh, thank you.
You swear the testimony about to give the Board in this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as I beg your pardon?
I do. My name is Michael Geller, that's G-E-L-L-E-R. I'm with the firm of Geller, Seive and Company. We're in Delphi in New Jersey, it's a part of Al Township. I'm a professional engineer and a professional planner. I'm a professional engineer since 1980, and a professional planner since 1983. I graduated, I'm also a certified municipal engineer since 1991. I graduated from Stevens Institute of Technology in 1975. I have about, going on May, will be 44 years of experience. I've served both the private and public sector as engineers and planners. I've testified before numerous boards as a professional engineer and a professional planner, both planning boards and boards of adjustment. And I've also served as a municipal engineer in Al Township.
I have a second?
Yep.
All in favor? Thank you very much. I'm sorry to interrupt, but as they release to the reports prepared by our professionals, are there any terms and conditions that the applicant cannot conform to?
No.
You agreed to all, to, to, you agreed to abide by all the terms and conditions in this report, sir?
Yes, the engineer's report, I'll address a couple of items that they want addressed, but I can address every of the items.
Those are factual things, but with respect to conditions contained therein, the applicant will do them?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Geller, have you had an opportunity to review the applications submitted, material submitted by the applicants?
Yes, the minor subdivision was prepared under the direction of my firm, Geller, Seive and Company, and yes, I have.
And have you had the opportunity to review the report dated February 13, 2019, from the Borough Engineers' Office with regard to the application?
Yes, I did.
And have you also reviewed the report from the Board's Planner dated February 11, 2019?
Yes, I did.
If you would, please provide to the Board details of the application as they pertain both to the engineering aspects and the planning aspects. And in doing so, would you also please address the concerns or comments on the Board's professional reports?
Yes, I will. First thing I'd like to do is pass out an exhibit, our only exhibit today. Everything on the Board has been submitted. That's the minor subdivision map, the conceptual grading plan, and tree save. If we need to refer to them, I've just mounted them on a board. I do have an exhibit that inventories all the lots within 200 feet of the property, plus other lots in the R7 zone that are undersized, that support our request for the variance. I know this gentleman had asked for it. If we could pass that out to the Board and mark one, how many you need?
Is that, is that within the 200-foot zone, or what is, what's, just the 200-foot?
It's both, 200-foot zone and then other lots in the R7 immediate area that are undersized.
Okay, we'll mark that A1 in evidence. Mind if I see it, please, first, before you distribute it?
I do want to note one correction I noted on the exhibit. I'll wait till you all get it, so. Where it's noted, 204.04, Lot 22, it's the second one down on the darkened row. The actual width there is 52.58.
52.58?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Unfortunately, I didn't print when I printed it. So I apologize for that. This property is identified as tax lots 21 and 22 in Block 2004, 24, strike that, 204.04. It's, the house number of the property, one that has a dwelling is number 49 Deerfield Road. This property is on the southerly side of Deerfield Road. It's about 250 feet west of University Place. It's in the R7 residential zone of Sayerville Borough. The minimum required lot area is 7,500 square feet, and the minimum required lot width is 75 feet. Looked at individually, Lot 21 has an area of 54,023, 5,0423 square feet, and a width of 52.28 feet, both of which are non-conforming. Lot 22 has an area of 5,519 square feet, and a width of 52.58 feet, also, both of which are non-conforming. These lots were created by a subdivision in the early 1950s, and are in accordance with a file map that's known as Map of Deerfield Park, which was filed on April 27, 1954, as map number 1881, file number 617. And whether by a prior owner or by an act of the borough, which they will do if lots are undersized and owned by a common ownership, these lots are listed on the tax records as a single entry, with Lot 21 being the lead lot, and Lot 22 being noted as an additional lot. And although the tax map continues to depict the two separate lots, they, they are considered, they're depicted separately, but they're consolidated in the tax records. When considered as a consolidated property, the lots would contain 10,942 square feet and a width of 104.86 feet. Currently, Lot 21 is occupied by a two-story, single-frame dwelling, which is known as 49 Deerfield Road. It's in rather poor condition, and there's also a detached garage to the southeast of it. And in addition, the lot is non-conforming as lot area and width. Also, the principal structure is non-conforming as to its front setback. It's set back only one foot from the right-of-way line of Deerfield Road. The side setback is only eight feet, as, side setback where eight feet is required is only 5.8 feet from the westerly sideline. The detached garage is non-conforming as to a side setback. And as well, the lot has a coverage of 21%, whereas the borough allows 20%. That may have come later in time, but that's the existence of the buildings, or 21% of the lot is currently covered by buildings. Lot 22, looked at separately, is occupied by a masonry garage, which is very close to the road. That's only .1 foot from the right-of-way line of Deerfield Road. Accessory structures, excuse me, it's one foot from the sideline where accessory structures are required to be five feet, and it's set back 14.3 feet from the road where 20 feet is required. And in addition, usually accessory structures are not allowed in a front yard, and that would be in the front yard of that particular lot. So there's several non-conformities associated with the existing development on the site. This, this area and this site is served by public water and sewer, and there are no environmental constraints that affect the property such as floodplain or wetlands or anything of that sort. At this point, I'd like to review the 200-foot radius of the property. If you refer to Exhibit A1, I'll refer you to the area map in the upper right-hand corner of the subdivision plan. And the inventory starts at the lot immediately east of Lot 22. Great time to infer ago. That's known, I could either enumerate each and every one of them, or you could take the list as it is. In summary, there's only two, there's 22 lots in the bottom. There are 22 lots that are developed with single-family dwellings that are within 200 feet of this property, that are in the R7 zone. I should point out, the Deerfield Road is the boundary, zone boundary, between the R7 road, R7 zone to the south, and the R10 zone to the north. So I really didn't look at the R10 zone for a comparison, because it would be an unfair comparison, because many of the lots, they are conforming to R10 requirements. But as far as...
Say that again?
I didn't review the...
You did not?
Did not.
Okay.
I reviewed the R7 zone vicinity within 200 feet. And in summary, there are 22 lots within 200 feet of the subject property that are in the 200-foot circle south of Deerfield Road. And of those 22 lots, 19 are undersized and non-conforming as to lot area and lot width. That is, they're less than 7,500 square feet in area, and they're less than 75 feet in width. The other three are conforming to lot area, that means they're greater than 7,500 square feet in area, but non-conforming as to width. All of those are less than 75 feet wide. So the summary there shows that these two lots that were created by the file map happened to have been bought by the same person and never developed over time. The sink, the lot that's vacant, was never developed for residential dwelling over time. May have been intended at some time, but never happened. So, of course, the town then consolidated the properties, because they were in common ownership.
So the subdivision line that exists, well, for lack of a better word, the line that divides Lot 21 and 22 essentially legally disappeared?
Yes, but it did disappear on the tax map. But yes, it became consolidated and technically did.
That's why they told you you needed a subdivision.
Yeah, I'll get into that in a minute, yes.
I just want the Board to understand the mechanics here.
Yes. If ever there's a conveyance of a deed of a situation like that, as soon as it comes to the township, usually the tax assessor or the borough officials will catch that and note that it was in their tax records as a consolidated lot, and then all of a sudden, one of the lots got conveyed, and that's why we're here today, because that's kind of what happened. On the second page...
Do you, do you know, I hate to interrupt, but this, this application has, is fraught with some, you know, legal issues, i.e. merger that, you know, are not normally on the front burner of everybody in the world. Do you know, these, these parcels were each purchased separately by the two women that previously testified, correct?
Yes.
Do you know if anybody told them that this, when they purchased this lot, that that line is, we're talking about is not a real subdivision line? That those two lots merged by operation of law?
I don't, I don't know that. On the second page of A1, I've also looked at six other, five other properties that are within 200, that are within the area and are less than, not conforming as to width and area, and they are listed on that page. I note on the top one, Block 206, Lot 3.01, is number 46 Deerfield Road, and that's a 55 by 111 lot, and it has an area of 5,105 feet. That's also not conforming to area and width, but that is in the R10 zone, and I only point that out as a lot immediately across the street that is non-conforming as well. So as you can see, there's a pattern of non-conforming lots in this area. As far as the R10 zone, that area across Deerfield Road, with the exception of that one lot I just mentioned, Lot 301 in Block 206, the area across Deerfield Road is not representative of the area south of Deerfield Road. There's a very clear development pattern that distinguishes those two areas of the municipality, and that's due to the zoning change that occurs across the street. This proposed subdivision is a minor subdivision that proposes to formally separate Lots 21 and 22 as separate tax lots in accordance, and exactly in accordance with the tax line that was established by the Deerfield Park 1954 subdivision map. As such, Lot 21 would continue to have an area of 5,423 square feet, and a lot width of 52.28 feet, and Lot 22, an area of 5,519 feet, and a width of 52.58 feet. Both lots obviously require the granting of variances for lot width and area. All the existing structures on this property would be demolished as part of the application, eliminating the various non-conforming setbacks, the closeness proximity to the street, the proximity to adjacent lot lines, not to mention the fact that they're very old, they're probably in the poorest condition in the entire area. The two lots are proposed to be developed with two-story, single-frame dwellings with four bedrooms, other, which other than lot areas and which will conform to all the bulk and coverage requirements of the R7 zone. That is depicted on a conceptual grading plan. As you can see, there, the existing structures are shown to be removed. The structures are built now rectilinear with the... The structures are built now rectilinear with the side and the rear line. The front is an angular line, a bend in Deerfield Road, so they will be setback, meet all the setbacks, meet the side setbacks, the building height requirements, the coverage requirements of the municipality will all be met by the proposed dwellings. Each dwelling would have a two-car garage and be served by a two-car wide driveway, eighteen feet in width, and each of the driveways are a minimum thirty-three feet. That's the closest point of any one garage to the right-of-way. In fact, most of them are longer than that. So as such, they would each provide, in accordance with the residential site improvement standards, three point five parking spaces per dwelling. That's how they count a two-car garage and driveway is counted as three point five spaces, and requirement for four-bedroom dwelling is three spaces. So the parking that's provided off-site is compliant. The proposed dwellings would be served by public water and sewer connections, and, as previously stated, the proposed subdivision would eliminate the various nonconforming setbacks that currently exist.
Chairman, go ahead. To the best of your knowledge, has there been any subdivisions in this area in the last ten or even twenty?
I don't believe so, because the lots are already small in size, so probably not.
Another question, Ethel. You gave us a chart that you're comparing twenty-two other lots to what you're proposing to do here. And you look at the, although most of them, except one, are nonconforming, they're at least a thousand square feet bigger than what you're proposing.
Close.
And some of them are very close to conforming. Right? So from a planning perspective, what's your thought on that?
My thought on that is, there was thought given to that when the subdivision was created, that there were going to be houses built on these lots. And typically, when a lot is, a lot is developed, if you look at the Dahl Meyer case in Lacey, which dealt with isolated, undersized lots, the proof there is being consistent with the neighborhood, and also, when you meet the setbacks that are required by the zone, that's typically an acceptable planning practice. And I was in Lacey, I was their township engineer in Lacey from nineteen ninety to two thousand and eight. I served their Board of Adjustment, and the Dahl Meyer test case came a couple of years before me, and we saw a lot of forty-foot lots that got developed. It wasn't always the most thing that the people in the neighborhood wanted to see, but in fact, when it's an isolated lot, it's common for those lots to get developed when you can demonstrate that it's consistent with the development pattern of the neighborhood. And that's the most important aspect.
It's significantly smaller than the other nonconforming lots.
Yeah, but, I mean, there's, you have a zone in Sarerville that allows five thousand, the R-five zone--
Yeah, but I'm talking, this is our seven zone.
I don't disagree with you. It is smaller than most of the lots in the neighborhood, yes.
I have one question. We have two ladies that bought two separate lots, somebody that owned it. How long did the one person that owned it, how long did they own the lot before them?
That's really not a question for me. I don't know.
We don't know.
I would just like to, if I may, review the variance relief we're requesting.
Go ahead.
Are you ready? Good?
Yes.
Under the nineteen sixty-seven case, Lochner versus Campoli, the merger doctrine established where adjacent, undersized lots under common ownership were merged. So technically, your court attorney is absolutely right. These lots were merged under the Lochner doctrine, they call it, and they were considered one parcel. They did remain, however, the two tax lots stayed on the tax map as such. And as demonstrated by the inventory of lots in the R-seven zone, probably many of which were created around the time of the Deerfield Park subdivision, which I assume most of them were in the immediate area, these two were a part of it. Those lots were created at the same time, and the neighborhood became developed in that manner, on lots of that size. And then at some time in the future, I presume, Sarerville decided to upgrade the zoning to R-seven, which required larger lot sizes than what the Deerfield Park subdivision had created. Lot twenty-one was developed with a dwelling and a detached garage, independent of the need for Lot twenty-two, and that's an important part in a Lochner subdivision case, is that the subdivision map shows it. The development of Lot twenty-one, with the house and the garage, are independent of the need for Lot twenty-two. Usually, if there is an apparent omission of that lot from use and development, it showed that there was never really an intent to develop that property, albeit, they did decide to construct a detached garage, and at one time, it's my understanding, there was an above-ground pool. But those are, the above-ground pool is kind of a removable structure. But that Lot twenty-one was developed independent of twenty-two. In any case, the proposed subdivision does follow the existing tax lot line exactly to the T as it was created on the nineteen fifty-four subdivision map. And because the lots were undersized and they were consolidated, now we need a subdivision from this board. All, you should keep in mind, too, that all existing structures on the property are rather old and in the poorest condition in the neighborhood. They will be demolished, and in itself, this would advance the purpose of zoning that promotes a desirable environment. That's one of the purposes in zoning on a C-two variance for which we're asking, and I'll get to that in a minute. Also, the removal of the structures will eliminate the nonconforming setbacks, as I previously stated. The proposed dwellings on lots twenty-one and twenty-two, developed as two separate properties, would be consistent with the pattern in the neighborhood, whereas the redevelopment of a merged lot with an area of ten thousand nine hundred and forty-two square feet and a width of one oh four point oh five feet would not be consistent with the neighborhood. It would be much larger than essentially all the lots in the R-seven zone in this area. It would stand out.
Say that again? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Can you repeat what you just said?
If the lot was developed as a single lot with the lots merged, it would be a ten thousand nine hundred and forty-two square feet compared to all those lot areas you saw in A-one, and it would have a width of one hundred and four feet, whereas all the widths in A-one were less than seventy-five. So it would really stand out. It would not be consistent, and would be out of character with the neighborhood.
So would a fifty-four hundred square foot?
Well, not as much, because a lot of those lots are six thousand square feet. It's really not that big a difference. I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to argue with you, but they're six thousand four hundred square feet, and we're five thousand five hundred, five thousand four hundred. So ten thousand's a lot different from six thousand versus what five thousand is.
Just seven thousand five hundred?
Yeah. I mean, what are we talking here? R-ten is ten thousand, R-seven is seventy-five hundred. All right.
Did you do any analysis on the R-ten zone?
No, I did drive by, and I looked at Shrek Place--
Why not? It's part of the two-hundred, two-hundred square feet radius.
Yes, I did.
Because I'd like to know how many properties within the R-ten are conforming lots?
Well, they're, they're conforming to R-ten, and then you have diagonally to the northwest across Deerfield Road is the Deerfield Inn, which is not a permitted use. It's an abnormality in the R-ten zone. It's a tavern in a residential zone. So that in itself is a nonconformity in the R-ten zone that stands out much more than the development of this lot would, in my opinion.
Well, I don't think we're going to be talking about, the standard of development is not the R-ten.
That's right.
Standard of development that the board is bound by is the R-seven. We can talk about, you know, adjoining R-ten zones, but they are not, the statutory criteria is not going to be based upon the R-ten zone.
I was only asking that, answering the question.
I just want everybody to understand that. But when you start talking about the R-ten zone, you know, people think they have to respond to it, but I want everyone to understand, we are not bound by the criteria of the R-ten So the fact there's a ten thousand square foot lot across the street that's in the R-ten, that, that is not a factor in determining whether or not there's compliance with the R-seven zone.
Thank you. This lot should be reviewed, as from a planning perspective, under the C-two criteria. And under the C-two criteria, there's certain prongs that need to be proved, both positive and negative. This variant, first of all, this variance requested this specific property, this specific property that was created in nineteen fifty-four by a subdivision that legally created the two lots. One lot was developed, one lot essentially was never developed for residential purposes, for resident occupancy.
You talk about Lot twenty-two is not developed for residential purposes?
No.
Which lot are you talking about, son?
Lot twenty-one is developed for residential, and Lot twenty-two is not, has a garage on it. So it's really not a residential lot, if you look at them separately.
That's your argument?
Second prong is that the purposes of the municipal land use law, the purposes of the Act of Zoning, are advanced by the requested variances, and I found three specific purposes that are advanced. The first, I believe, is that it promotes the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, regions, preservation of the environment. That's in quotes. The development of Lot twenty-one and twenty-two with a new single-family dwellings advanced this purpose, more so than the redevelopment of the merged lots as one residence. C, purpose C of zoning is that there would be adequate provisions for light air and open space. And in that, the proposed dwellings will all meet the yard requirements. Those are the traditional ways you look for light air and open spaces, by meeting the yard setbacks and the height requirements. All these buildings will meet the height and yard setbacks requirements to the maximum, to the all extents of the borough ordinance, and therefore, we do advance the purpose of light air and open space. And the third prong of the advancement of the purposes is that the demolition of the existing structures on this property promotes a desirable visual environment, as will the attractiveness of the proposed dwellings compared to what exists today. I mean, I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to drive past the site. A lot of boards I appear before and boards I've served have looked at the site, and I think you'll agree that these, these structures are in need of replacement. And then therefore, we can conclude that the benefits of the application would outweigh any detriment to the public good. I think the public would look to see these lots, these lots redeveloped. On the negative criteria, the variances can be granted without substantial detriment to the neighborhood or the public good. The way we demonstrated consistency with the development pattern of the neighborhood and the elimination of the current ISO can be seen as a positive. And lastly, the approvals of the variance will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance or zone plan. Proposed building will be within all the required setbacks of the zone, be under all limitations on height and coverage, and by buildings and impervious areas, and the proposed construction will meet all building and design requirements of the borough. So, except for the area and width, which were established many years ago for the individual lots that are on tax record, this does not have any impairment to the purposes of the zoning ordinance or zone plan of Sarerville Borough. I'll move on to Jay's report, if I may. And I did agree to anything that was conditional in nature, we agreed to do.
Just go through every, every item and--
Sure. On page one, item one, that's the February thirteenth report of Jake Cornell. The subject application was recently determined to be complete by the Board's Technical Review Committee. We refer to the report of the board planner for his review of the variances, conformance schedule, and zoning ordinance. Back.
Just, just through the technical portion?
Oh, okay.
You don't have to read the report, we have it front of us.
Okay, thanks. You got it. General comments. The applicant is seeking a waiver from the borough design standard for the construction of sidewalk along the frontage of the property. This request should be discussed in further detail. I would point out that this vicinity of Deerfield Road and most of Deerfield Road has no sidewalks on this side of the street. Sidewalks are on the northerly side of the street. In fact, there are no sidewalks on this side from University Place to Henry Street, which is the next street over from Nini Sink. There are constraints that are proposed by the slopes. This property is on the upland side of Deerfield, and then it drops down fairly steeply from Amherst, which is the street behind us. It drops fairly steeply. So there are still some slope concerns that if you constructed sidewalk on this property, when you deal with the adjacent properties that have steep slopes, the sidewalks would really go nowhere without doing an extensive program. And lastly, the sides on the opposite side of Deerfield are continuous. They're pretty much the whole stretch of the road. So I believe this application warrants the waiver of the sidewalks for these two lots. Number two, any future improvement should be required to be installed in accordance with the requirements of the borough design standards. We agree. In addition, the applicant will be required to obtain a tree preservation permit prior to development of the property, and the applicant should be required to comply with this requirement at the time of the building permit application. We agree. Three, the number of bedrooms in the proposed dwellings should be discussed in order to confirm that the required off-street parking requirements have been satisfied. We already addressed that. And four, the tree removal preservation plan details the number of trees, dead trees on the site. The applicant should clarify if these trees will be removed. If so, the integrity of the existing retaining wall toward the rear property line should be preserved. We agree, and we'll look at that when we get the plot plan. We'll actually note on the plot plan that the removal of any trees in the vicinity of the wall, there'll be an inspection of the wall, and will be done. If the wall is on our prop, I believe it is, on our property. Yeah, the wall will be, if necessary, reconstructed, repaired, as necessary. On B, minor subdivision plan, we agree to all those details. And C is all soil erosion and sediment control. I believe I apologized to Jay before. I did not realize that Sarerville was on its own jurisdiction for soil erosion and sediment control. Most of the time, we have to go to the freehold district. So we acknowledge all those comments, and we'll abide by those comments. And lastly, is the planner's report from John Leon Cavalo, and I believe I addressed the planning considerations for the variance, the two, the four variances, two lot area and two lot width variances. That's on page one, and the applicant should demonstrate for the board that if a minor subdivision is approved, it will have no substantial detriment to the public good and that there will be no substantial impairment to the borough zone plan or zoning ordinance. I believe I've done that, and I think this is a good application. I think the end result will be the creation of two desirable dwellings that are in the setbacks for the zone, consistent with the neighborhood. Most of the other homes in this area are very nice, they're well-preserved, they've been updated in many cases. You can't even tell the age of them from the exterior. In this case, these lots will now better match that, and I think that's a good fit and a good situation for the borough. That's the end of my testimony. Thank you.
You've heard the testimony of the planner. Any questions from the board?
It would have been nice to have this here as part of the package. Why didn't we have this, the analysis of the lots?
Well, that wasn't done until I was preparing for the testimony earlier this week.
Especially, this is something that we'd like to have, to review.
Yeah, well, I mean, it would be, I would suggest that if it's a, something you want to see, you get it on your checklist as a checklist requirement for any variances for undersized lots or lots of that nature, and that would be, that's what I would recommend to my board, if this was my board, but it wasn't a requirement, and it was done by others in my office. I'm, I'm kind of like Mariano Rivera. I'm here trying to close the subdivision. So I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, I'm still stuck on, how can we sell properties when people not understand what they're buying? Doesn't this come up in the title search? I'm, I'm stuck. If it was merged and they were sold as two separate properties, how is that valid?
Can't answer that. I didn't sell the property, that's why I inquired about that. It's not our function.
Okay.
Rob, the situation before you now is that it's one lot.
That as of nineteen fifty-four, on the tax maps, it was two lots.
Yes.
Apparently.
And in two thousand and eighteen, it was sold as what it was deeded in nineteen fifty-four. Is that correct?
Correct, essentially, yes.
Right. Somewhere along the line, we got a quagmire.
It's, it's--
We either have a big lot with a big house or two lots which conform to the area that I believe on two smaller lots. What we got there now, to me, you're absolutely right. When I went by it, I went, wow, that is in need of redevelopment. How we do it is up to the board. I know that it's in an area, I live not far from there, probably within five hundred. I know that it's in an area, I live not far from there, probably within five hundred feet zone of that. But from where my house is on all small lots, when you get back over to University and all of those, that's a newer development. They are the R-10s. So that was, that part of Mini Sink and all of that are the newer homes. This side and the other side, they're all smaller lots. That's from old Sayerville. So I don't know how many more of these we're going to see, but I don't know.
Well, you can ask him, how many other lots are similar square footage that are in the immediate area?
Well, I think if you look at the second page of the Exhibit A...
You can say the square footage, the square footage. These were, like Mr. Maginot's saying, these are a thousand feet smaller than the smallest ones there. You range anywhere from seventy, seventy-two hundred, sixty-nine hundred, all the way down to sixty-four. And then you have us at the five forty, forty-two, twenty-three, and the five-five, nineteen. So either you have a ten thousand square foot lot there. I mean, where do they sit now? I mean, we have two ladies that own the same big lot. Is that two different ladies? Two different owners?
Two different ladies purchased those, those lots or sold as independent lots. That's the way they were sold. What's that?
So what you're looking to do is subdivide it now to make it two different lots.
Well, the problem is, Mr. Chairman, is that somebody researched the lots and determined that they were formerly, before the purchase was made, under common ownership. That they're under common ownership, Leonard referred to the Lochner case, that's a merger case. Those lots that are owned in common by some one person, they end up merging by operation of law. Once they merge by operation of law, it becomes one ten thousand square foot lot. They purchased those somehow, independent lot, thinking that they could build on them separately. And the munis- the borough told them, no. They merged by operation of law. You need to get a subdivision to build anything on the separate lots which were acquired by them.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Is it possible that you can buy them separately? It's one title, regardless of what happened in the fifties. How can you sell something that you don't have a title for? Like Ms. Lee said earlier, there's a title search.
I can't, I can't comment on what happened. I have no idea. It's not in front of you. What's in front of you is, now that we know, we're bound by the fact that it is one ten thousand square foot lot. The issue before you is whether or not the lot should be subdivided as proposed. That's the issue.
Regardless of what happened before.
That's right. That's all we have in front of us. We're not going to figure out what legally happened before they got here.
Let me ask you a question then. If we don't do this subdivision, then there's one big lot that's owned by two different people.
Well, it's better, it's better put by it's one big lot. You're not going to figure out who owns what.
Wait a minute, we had testimony earlier that...
That's the way you want to put it?
Counsel.
Yes.
We had testimony before that one person owned lot twenty-one, one person owned lot twenty-two.
They do now.
That's what we were told earlier in the evening, weren't we not?
Somebody made a mistake.
And going back to what you said, what's before us tonight? Someone came up and said, I own lot number twenty-one. Somebody said, I own lot number twenty-two. And now you're asking us to subdivide two separate lots.
One lot into two. Back into the two that it was.
The two that it was is something that's really kind of immaterial to you. This is, you, they would not be here seeking a subdivision if that wasn't one lot. I can't explain how it was sold to two certain people.
Well, that's, that's the thing that I can't get my hand around. I can't get my hand around that there's one lot and two people own it.
It really, it really, we're not going to, we're not going to solve that problem here for these people.
Oh, as a planning view, down the road, and I don't know if these people intend to build together or if they know each other or they just happened to buy twenty-one and the other one bought twenty-two?
That's apparently what they said they did.
Is that what happened?
That's what they testified they did.
That's right.
Okay, so...
But it's one lot, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, can I ask a question? Just to simplify this, because we wouldn't have to make a decision here tonight.
That's right.
So what was before me tonight then, from my perspective, is we have a conforming lot and we want to make two non-conforming lots out of it.
That's correct.
Okay. That's all I have. All right, I'm ready.
Conforming in the sense of lot area, lot width, lot depth, there are some setback variances that the planner told you about, the shed and things of that nature. Those are, those are non-conformities.
They're existing, yeah.
I just wanted to answer a question that was answered previously. Someone asked if we, if there's any other lots in the area that are similar in size to this. And if you look at page two of A1, the lot immediately across the street is five fifty-five by one eleven, that's six thousand one hundred square feet. One fifteen Deerfield Road is fifty by one hundred and thirteen, that's five thousand six hundred and fifty square feet. Forty-two Price Street is forty by one hundred, that's four thousand square feet. And forty-three Elizabeth is fifty by one nineteen, that's five thousand nine hundred and fifty square feet. You asked if there are similar lots developed with residences in the area, and there are four examples.
All right, but there were twenty-two examples on this page.
Twenty-two is the immediate two-hundred-foot radius.
I asked if there are any other ten thousand square foot lots.
None.
That's my issue.
None.
In the two-hundred book.
So I mean, it's an important consideration by the board to consider the development nature of the area as well as the fact there was, this was created legally, the two separate tax lots, albeit they were consolidated at some time in the recent past. There were two, in nineteen fifty-four, there were two lots and all the building, a lot of the building that occurred in the area did so in that manner.
I did, and I'd like to ask the lawyer this. How did they get titles for these?
They, I did not represent them on the purchase, but they purchased the lots as separate lots. Now, obviously, as the attorney was indicating, by operation of law, they merged because they were under common ownership. So they did purchase them as two separate lots, but that is the problem. That is what we have to do because according to the Borough of Sayerville, the lots had merged into one big lot over ten thousand square feet. We are here to ask that it be subdivided along the same line that existed previously that whoever sold these properties to the applicants thought that they were two separate lots or considered them two because they told them two, they sold them two as two separate lots. And I'm not saying that that was correct, but this is, this is what's brought us here is...
What I, what I'm having trouble with is, a function of a real estate deal is that you get somebody to clarify that they are two separate lots and that there is no restrictions on the deeds or anything like that. A title search, right? Isn't that, isn't that true?
Yeah, and I believe, again, I think I have a question of, I believe there were two separate title policies issued with regard to the property.
Well, if that's the case, that clears that up because then it's, it's telling you that there are two lots of them.
They're not two lots. You can call them two lots, you can call them two lots till the cows come home. They were two lots, it's correct, but they are no longer two lots. They merged because the same person ended up owning them. If you own two lots together and they're under the same name, they're just going to merge.
So somewhere between nineteen fifty-four and two thousand and nineteen, these lots got merged by convenience for the town. Nobody, nobody else told anybody else that the town, the town just did it. But it's still on the tax maps now. Come to two thousand and eighteen, these two women, right or wrong, go and buy two separate lots, want to build two separate houses on non-conforming lots. But now they have to subdivide one piece of property that they both own. Twenty-five years I've been sitting up here, I haven't seen something like this.
I saw it coming. I knew when the two people came up here and testified that they owned separate lots and they were here for a subdivision on a ten thousand square foot lot, there's something wrong.
Right, and that's what we have, and I have...
No, no, sir. In my considered opinion, as a planning board lawyer doing this for over thirty years, it is not in your province to correct the applicant's problem. I don't even know what their problem is. There's a problem. But we can't correct it at this, at this level. You're, you're a, you're a planning board, you're a land use board. What's in front of you and they're stuck with is a ten thousand square foot lot. The issue before you now is whether or not you want to grant or deny the subdivision. That's the issue, based upon the evidence and testimony you've heard.
Mr. Kessler, if they came before us in a different situation where they did own this lot and there was none of this other quagmire that we're in, then they could bring a subdivision request before us, correct?
They can do it now.
They can do it now. That's what I'm saying. But if we didn't have this situation and they had the lot and they knew it was one lot at ten thousand, they could come before us and say, I'd like to make it two...
They could.
So then everything else doesn't matter.
Right.
And was...
At the end of the day, it's a ten thousand square foot lot. I don't care if there's fifty people that own it.
That's what's before us tonight.
Okay.
They're going for a subdivision.
That's right.
That's it.
Exactly.
So is everybody correct on this? We're going for a subdivision. Either you're going to approve the subdivision or we're not going to approve the subdivision and, and... Well, I'm just, okay?
Can I add something?
Go ahead.
Counsel, do you have any other witnesses? Is that your case?
That is our case.
May I open up the public, Mr. Chairman?
I get a second to open up the public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public like to speak? Come on up, give us your name and where you live. Hopefully, it's next door.
Step the street. Good evening, Marie Cook, thirteen Amherst Place. My husband and I own...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Could you raise your right hand? I swear, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Swear of testimony about to give the board in this matter, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, have you got?
Oh, my God, it is. Good evening, my husband and I own the property directly above their property since nineteen seventy-six. There is an existing retaining wall. You know, we're up here, they're down here. I want to make sure I understood when your planner was here, he indicated that it was their wall. And therefore, if there's any construction, if the wall is compromised, they would be responsible. Did I understand that properly?
I believe that's what he said.
Because I would like it on record.
I said it already.
I know, but I have to tell you what you can do myself.
Ma'am, you have to stay over here so we can pick you up.
You're not going to pick me up?
Not physically.
I just want to understand.
She was married.
That went beyond what I was thinking, I'm sorry.
The subdivision plan and the survey that was done clearly shows that that lot is free, clear of the property line and on the subject property.
Okay, the retaining wall is on their property?
Yes.
Okay, because if there is a problem with that wall when you're doing the construction, my yard's going to wind up in their yard.
No, I understand.
You have no problem making any revisions to the retaining wall if it's compromised?
If it's compromised, they'll have to repair it, yes.
Okay. Is that what you wanted to hear?
Yes, I would like to hear that. I would like it on record and thank you all very much.
It is now.
Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes, you can. Who do you want to ask it to?
Yes, I do.
I just wanted to be clear, so your wall, the wall was really your only concern. You're fine with the construction, you're fine with the neighborhood. You just want to make sure if the wall is compromised, it would be fixed.
I just wanted to make sure, because I understand there are sixteen trees coming out, they're going to be digging foundations, they're going to be knocking down an existing home.
Of course.
I just wanted to make sure that the wall isn't compromised.
And that's your only concern?
That's basically our only concern.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
I'd be concerned too.
Good. Anybody else have any, any comment? Anybody from the public? Any other public con... Frank?
I guess I have to get up.
Not that old, Frank, come on.
Well, hey, you know...
All right, sir, you want to raise your right hand, please?
Frank Fella, five Kenan Street. You want this?
I need you to raise your hand, sir. Your right hand. Swear of testimony about to give the board in this matter, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, have you got?
Okay, just two quick questions for the applicant. Do you have a rendering of what these houses would look like?
There was a plan submitted to the board. There was a plan submitted to the board.
Okay. Do you have it available or...
I don't have it, attorney has it.
You're not asking for a height variance, obviously. I'm concerned you have a garage that's going to be built into the grade or...
Yes.
I guess my issue is the height of this new proposed houses compared to the height of existing houses.
The height will comply with the thirty-five feet permitted. There's a... There's a garage proposed at one twelve point five. The basement is actually above the garage. The garage is set into the slope. But the rest of the structure is two stories and it starts with a finished floor of one twenty-two seventy-five. If I recall, the architectural plan, and this is off memory, the total height is about thirty feet from the garage floor to the top of the ridge. It's about thirty feet. And be aware too, although the front is low, the back is high, the proposed finished grade behind the dwelling is a good eight feet above, eight and a half feet above the front. So from the back, it's going to look like a twenty-foot high to the ridge.
And, and what is that going to do to the overall roof peak of your new proposed structure to the existing? Is it going to be equal? Is it going to exceed it by...
The existing is up very close to the road.
Not the existing that you're demolishing, but your neighbor existing.
I really didn't look at that, but most of those are two-story or two-story capes, story and a half, so I'm assuming they're close to the same height.
But your two-story includes, is the garage going to be at grade level or below grade?
The garage is ten feet below the finished floor. It's into the grade.
Ten feet below?
Yes.
So you have the access in the front, but it's basically below grade or way back?
Well, the grade in the back is approximately two feet below the finished floor, so that's the distinction. It slopes up along the side of the house.
But from the rendering, you're showing twelve, fifteen stairs, that's about eight feet.
That's probably true, yeah.
So that's eight feet above grade for the first level?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, so eight, sixteen, you're twenty-four feet is the total height of your building?
Above what? To, from, from finished floor or something like that. I think it's less than that. I have to look at the elevation. It's on there. Minus ten, twenty-three. Actually, from the, from the garage floor, according to this elevation, it's minus nine feet, ten inches to twenty-three feet, nine inches. So it's almost thirty-three feet, under thirty-three feet to the ridge. So it's under the thirty-five foot maximum.
Jay, what would you say is the height of, you know, other houses on Deerfield Road compared to this? If this is thirty feet, the rooftops of the Jason House?
Comment, I don't have that information, but I know there's a lot of houses that are similar where the garages are basically built into the slope and your first floors are up above. And it does not exceed the ordinance requirement, so it will be...
So even though, even though you're showing, you know, twelve, thirteen stairs, by the time you get to the top of the stairs, you're going to be at grade, you're saying?
Right.
Okay, that, that's my concern is if the height of the house is going to look out of character for the neighborhood.
It's got to filter into the hill, so it's going to sort of...
And would it be possible for me to take a look at the file at the planning board office later in the week? Is that public record or is that... So including the engineers and planners' report? If I stop by, is that okay? Okay.
No problem.
That's it.
Welcome to look at them.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions of the applicant? Any other questions before us? Make a motion to close the public second, all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, you've heard the testimony before us. What was your pleasure? All right, let me make this easy. We have a motion to grant the subdivision with all the variances that we've heard before tonight. I, I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to grant the subdivision.
I have a second.
I'll second.
All right. We have a, we have a motion to accept the subdivision of the two pieces of property and I have a second. I guess if there's any questions, any questions under that? All right, we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Hidkovich?
No. And the reason is, the majority of these properties that we're talking about in the area, the 22, 11 are extremely close to what the limit is. And then there are the additional four that do conform the existing two that they're trying to subdivide. So it's four conforming, 11 that are very close to what it should be. So the majority of the properties are close to what the zone should be. These two lots would be at the bottom, the very smallest properties in the entire area. To be consistent with previous properties that came before us for subdivision, we've denied based on the size of the properties conforming to the, the zone. That's my reason.
Counselman Delena?
No, I agree with Mr. Hidkovich.
Mr. Davis?
No, I agree.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
No, for the same reason, Mr. Hidkovich.
Mr. McAdone?
No, I mentioned earlier, we're taking, I think this is the one lot, from what I gathered tonight, and with subdividing it and making two non-conforming lots. I'm inconsistent as other applications come before here. And also as a planning board member, I plan based on our ordinances and not based on variances.
Ms. O'Leary?
Yes.
Chairman Tai?
Yes.
Application denied.
Okay. Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board members, for your consideration.
Very much.
Zone by, by ordinance, not by variance.
Okay. On the next.
Someone's, I'll tell you what. Somebody got beat up. If you see two lots, everybody's in the eye. My flag goes up. This should be easier. I don't know what happened, kids. All right. We have Marcus Burnett, minor subdivision, 1 Frank Avenue, block 413.01, Lot 10. Mr. Sacks? How are you, Mr. Sacks? How you been?
Mr. Tai, good to see you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, board professionals. Lawrence Sacks, on behalf of the applicant, Marcus Burnett. This property is located Lot 10, block 413.01, on the corner of Frank Avenue and Eugene. The property is located in the R-10 zone. I have really just one witness this evening, Mr. Sharif Ali from Amertech, who was our project engineer, and he'll describe what we're planning on doing here. Essentially, what we're looking to do is to subdivide this lot, which is approximately .90 acres, into three conforming lots. In fact, we're not seeking any variances this evening, and this is not a merged lot, so you don't have to wrestle with that problem as well. So, Mr. Chairman and.
There's a tiny, little.
Pre-existing non-conformity, which we'll talk about.
We will be talking.
We'll talk about that. But anyway, Mr. Rogoff, I've provided your, your board with the proof of publication and notices and I just, we can acknowledge jurisdiction.
I, I reviewed them and they are jurisdictions properly before the planning board and I've reviewed the public notice as well as the, the notice of the 200-foot and the wall in order.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rogoff. And also, Mr. Chairman, I will acknowledge receipt of Mr. Cornell's report and Mr. Leon Cavalo's report, and both of which can be made part of the record. And actually, we're going to be complying with, with everything. There's one waiver we'll, we'll be seeking, which Mr. Ali will testify to. So really, without further ado, if we can have Mr. Sharif Ali sworn in and I'll have him qualified. And I don't know what happened to your microphone.
Oh, I have one.
You have it?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Sure. Sir, you want to raise your right hand? Swear of testimony about to give the board this matter, truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, have you got?
I do.
We're going to need your name and address and qualifications.
Uh, Sharif Ali, that's A-L-Y, Amertech Engineering, 757 Ridgewood Avenue in North Brunswick. Qualification?
Yep.
I'm a professional, a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. Graduated from NJIT back in 1985. In 89, I received my professional license in engineering and in planning.
Have you been qualified? Are you a planner, are you a planner as well?
That is correct.
You're asking us to accept his qualifications in both?
We can accept them in, yes. I'm asking him both, although we're really, we're not seeking any variances, but he can discuss the non-conformities. That's fine.
We have, we have a motion to accept his credentials. Do I have a second? I have a second.
Thank you.
Okay. Favor, aye?
Okay, Mr. Ali, can you please describe the site in question and what is being proposed, giving us the existing conditions and what the purpose of the subdivision will be?
Absolutely. So on the borough tax map, sheet 119, you have Lot 10 and block 413.01. Just like Mr. Sacks said, that we on the corner was frontage on Frank Avenue as well as Eugene Boulevard. There's also an intersection across the street, just for information, that's Adam Boulevard. The house is known to the post office as well as the neighbors as 1 Frank Avenue. Also, the house with the frontage on Frank Avenue, that's the face of the house, and the back of the house will be pretty much lined up with Eugene Boulevard. These, so the, what's out there right now, a few individual trees in the front, in the front yard along Eugene Boulevard, and as I said, the house is facing Frank Avenue with a driveway also coming out of Frank Avenue. So within the vicinity of the house, there is, by the way, the driveway is very large driveway, and within the vicinity of the house, there is a few individual trees and the remainder of the lot, it's a wooded lot, was also frontage on Crossway Brook. Crossway Brook has, as well as any Brook, there are a stream or waterways, they have wetlands and flood hazard area. Both of them are confirmed and received from NJD AP, and that is shown on the plan. The, so the plan that we have before us is a minor subdivision for creation of three conforming lots. As far as the, the two new lots, totally in conforming with the bulk variances, the lot size, the, the sub, the lot, the subject lot has it having to be in the R-10 zone, that is 10,000 square feet, 100 by 100. When you have a corner lot, that the area goes up to 11,875 as well as the lot width, it goes up to 125. So we do meet the requirement for the two new created lots. This subdivision is not creating any variances. The existing variance that was mentioned before, one is for the front, and it appears to be, the zone in the area has been upgraded. This could be R-7 before and went to R-10. Most of the lots in the area, they're about 75 feet wide. We are 76 feet. The second variance is the, I call it rear yard, it's 10 feet, which is the back of the house. That's also existing variance. For your information, Frank Avenue as well as Eugene, the fully improved road with curb, sidewalk, uh, with curb, no sidewalks in the area, no sidewalks at all in the neighborhood. And utilities, sewer, water, everything is there. So that's pretty much the.
Okay, so, Mr. Ali, in terms of proposed Lot 10.01, which is where the existing home is now, that lot's going to be 13,352 square feet?
That is correct.
And because that's a corner lot, it actually requires 11,875 square feet in the R-10 zone.
That is correct, so we're way above that.
All right, and Lot 10.02, which is the lot adjacent to that, is 10,533 square feet, 10,000 feet is required in the zone.
That is correct.
And then the final lot, which runs back to the cross, Crossway Brook, is Lot 10.03. That lot's going to be 14,031 square feet where 10,000 feet is required.
That is correct.
All right. Now, in terms of these houses, how many, how many bedrooms are in the existing house on proposed Lot 10.01?
The existing home is one-story, three bedrooms, with two-car garage, and we are proposing two-car driveway. So that's total of four residential side improvements, standard for whatever reason, you call it 3.5. So we do exceed the residential side improvement as far as the number of bedrooms and the driveways and the garage.
All right, and also for the two new houses that are proposed to be built on Lot 10.02 and 10.03, those will also be four-bedroom houses?
Yes, that's one-story, four-bedroom homes, two-car garage, two-car driveway.
And that also satisfies the residential side improvement?
That is correct.
So we don't need any variance or any relief or any off-street parking?
That is correct.
Okay. And in terms of, and I think you indicated this, in terms of the lot width pre-existing non-conformity, is it your testimony that all of the lots which are actually fronting on Eugene are 75 feet in width?
All the lots within 200 feet as well as beyond 200 feet along Frank Avenue and along Adams Avenue and along Eugene Boulevard.
All have 75-foot frontage?
They're all 75.
Okay. And in fact, I know Mr. Leon Cavalo had asked us, as part of his recommendation or part of his request, was to give us an idea of what the lot sizes were in the surrounding neighborhood. Mr. Rogoff, I just have a blow-up of the tax map, which I think might prove beneficial for the board.
A one in evidence.
Thank you.
So the, the lot size in area, they all meet the requirement within the zone, 10,000. So they all above that 10,000 square feet.
All right, so let's, just, just to go through this real quickly then.
Just one second, just to distribute it.
Yeah, I'll let the board, the board distribute it.
Okay.
All right, so the lots that front, actually the lots that are on the west side of Eugene Avenue, which would be lots three through 12, I guess, with the most, with the most part, are all 75-foot lots with frontage. Some of them have 85, some have 91. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, there is only one lot, Lot 2, that has 114.
Okay.
It's just an odd-shaped lot.
All right, and then the lot, the lots on the other side of the street as well, there's five lots over there, four of them also have 75, 75 feet of frontage.
They're all 75, yes.
All right, and the lots that front on Adams also, with the exception maybe of Lot 14, are also 75-foot of frontage?
Uh, yes, with the exception, you called it Lot 14?
Yes, with the exception of Lot 14.
No, they all, yeah, Lot 14 is 64.
I'm sorry.
So 65, and then you have an.
And the rest of them are 75?
Yeah, so it's a little bit over 75, yes.
And the lots that front on Eugene, which are the deeper lots that back up to Crossway, also all have 75 feet of frontage?
That is correct.
Okay. So the average lot size of these, and it looks like these were probably the subdivided lots, are all approximately 10 to 11,000 square feet?
Yes, it looks like they all came out of a final plat or a file map and, and was, they were designed for 75. That was the intention.
All right. And I know this question's probably going to come up, but is this the only lot that can really be subdivided in this area?
That is correct.
All right, because it fronts on Eugene and Frank Avenue, correct?
That is correct.
The lots that are to the north on Eugene are all deeper lots with 75-foot frontage, but would not be feasible for any type of subdivision relief?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further questions on this. We're not seeking any variances, but I did want to have Mr. Ali at least touch on the pre-existing non-conformity that we do have. We can't eliminate that, we can't abate it. It's the way the lots configured, it's, and it's only pertaining to the existing house, the lot on, the existing house that is being subdivided into Lot 10.01. So I have nothing further, Mr. Ali. I do have Mr. Cornell's report and Mr. Leon Cavalo's report. If you'd like, I'll go through those and tell you what we can agree with. And if that's okay, Mr. Rogoff?
Uh, yeah, if you could just tell us whether or not you.
Sure.
The terms and conditions contain those reports.
Yeah, I can speak to that. We will agree with all the items. The only item that, as we indicated, under A1, general comments, item A1, that talks about sidewalks, and we indicated that there is no sidewalks in the area.
Are there any sidewalks at all on, on Frank?
Not to my knowledge.
And none on Eugene?
None.
Okay. All right, so, so, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cornell, we'll be seeking a waiver for the requirement for a sidewalk. Under the rest of the general comments, I guess number two is just a general comment and we'll.
Comply with.
We'll comply with that. Number three also, we'll comply with.
Yes.
Number four, I think you've testified to, which was the fact that these are four-bedroom and one house being three-bedroom, but it satisfies the RSIS?
Yes, we are in compliance.
All right, and.
With the residential side improvement.
Mr. Ali, you've reviewed the comments from Mr. Cornell under B Minor Subdivision Plan, items one through six. We will comply with all of that?
Yes, will achieve it, yeah.
All right, and soil erosion and sediment control under paragraph C, items one through 11, you'll comply with all of those revisions and requests?
Yes, I don't really, I don't realize that, you know, I know the previous application said the same thing, but I don't realize that you guys have your own review for soil erosion.
Okay. All right, and finally, Mr. Leon Cavalo's report. I think you've covered paragraph one of his planning considerations. And number two, although we're not, we're not seeking any variance relief, any new variances as a result of this application, based upon your testimony, is it your opinion that there will be no detriment to the public good and no impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance?
Absolutely. We, all the lots that we have, they exceed the area requirement as well as they exceed the, the new created lot as well as the existing, and they exceed the width require, uh, requirement of the new created lots.
Okay. All right, so we're not seeking any C1 or C2 bulk variance relief as a result of this application?
That is correct.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I have nothing further.
Do I have any questions from the board to the professionals? Just a little? Well, the floor is yours. First of all, you said you didn't need any C1 or C2, but you gave us a C2 proofs.
No, why not?
Number one, send the report. I just want to be clear, okay, because you said to me, existing variances that have never been granted are variances. You need to get relief if you've never had them before. And if we can subdivide a piece of property from a 37,000 square foot lot to three new lots, this board gets to look at all of the deficiencies that are on your property, including existing conditions that have never been otherwise granted as deficiencies on the zoning ordinance. That's number two. Number three, I just want to make sure, you gave us a C2 proofs anyway, I just want to be sure because I looked at your notice and your notice sets forth variances.
I said, set forth as pre-existing non-conformities.
Okay, well, not necessarily.
No, of course.
You, you have a lot width of, on 10.01, that's 100 required, 76.93 is provided, then you cite a rear yard setback, the same lot where a tent provided and 25 feet is required. number two. Number three, I just want to make sure, you gave us a C-two proof anyway, I just want to be sure, because I looked at your notice, and your notice sets forth variances.
I said, set forth as pre-existing non-conformities.
Okay, well, not necessarily.
No, correct.
You, you have a lot width of, uh, uh, on ten point oh one, that's a hundred required, seventy-six point ninety-three is provided, then you cite a rear yard setback, the same lot where a ten is provided and twenty-five feet is required. And I looked at your plan in the zoning schedule, and the zoning schedule says you need, uh, two lot width, uh, variances, and there's a rear, minimum rear yard setback. Isn't that right? No, I'm sorry. There's an asterisk next to it. I don't care if it's an existing condition, it's a variance.
I understand that, but there's not two lot width variances. One is a table that shows-
Oh, yes, you're right, yeah, you're right. That's one, he's, he's correct about that. So, it's, it's, it's the only variance you're seeking for front, for the lot width is, is on ten point oh one.
The one that fronts on Frank Avenue.
He's right, I see you're correct about that. So, I just want, yeah, I just want to know what, what conditions do not currently comply with the ordinance? So, assuming the board acts favorably upon this, I know how to draft the resolution to give you the appropriate relief that-
Okay.
You know, you should be getting if that's what they decide to do.
All right, so I think I can clarify that. So, obviously, and again, we can call it a variance, or we can call it a pre-existing non-conformity, but in any event, uh, lot, proposed Lot ten point oh one-
Which is the old-
The old, right, which is where the house is now, which fronts on Eugene and Frank, uh, which actually, I guess, fronts on Frank, all right, and because it's got one Frank Avenue, but because it's a corner lot, it's got two front yards.
That's right.
So, so one of them is deficient, uh, it's seventy-six feet, a hundred feet is required.
Which has never, ever, never been granted.
Never been granted, no.
So, you want a solid approval?
Sure.
You, you should get that relief.
Yes, and in fact, I think that's consistent with Mr. Ali's testimony, that every lot, ninety percent of the lots in the zone-
I get that, I get that.
Are seventy-five feet.
I just want to be accurate and, and make sure that going forward-
Mm-hmm.
That it's not a pre-existing non-conformity, because you've been granted a variance for that condition.
Right. And then I guess the, the other variance would be, again, on proposed Lot, uh, ten point oh one, um, I, I, we listed it as a rear yard setback. There may be some confusion if your, if your staff is classifying it as a side yard, but if it's, if it's a side yard, I think we're fine, but if it's a rear yard, then it's twenty-five feet is required, we only have ten. The, the, the house is ten feet from the rear property line, that can't change, so.
Okay, so that's, you all agree on it?
Okay.
Variance.
Yep.
We understood that, but just to make sure, you're not generating any variances to subdivision, that's correct.
That's correct.
Not generating, we're just granting them that it exists, yeah, which is- The house there, right?
When the house is built, wouldn't it have to approve already?
It changed, changed the zoning area.
Yeah, something happened, it could have been, it could have pre-existed, it could have pre-existed your zoning ordinance.
Yeah, since every lot is seventy-five feet, I have to think this was probably part of the R-seven, and they changed it to the R-ten, so. In fact, anybody who now wants to even do anything on this property, uh, and you may, you know, I'm sure you've had applications, probably has to come before the zoning board to get relief because of the possible lot width as well, if it, you know, it affects anything, so.
So, that's your testimony?
That's our testimony, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'm gonna open, I may-
Make a motion open to public?
Yes, I'll make a motion, open to public. Magano, you make that motion?
I did.
Okay, and seconded. Anybody before the public like to come up and speak, please come up, raise your hand, get sworn in, tell us where you live and your name?
My name is Francis Noel.
Wait until you get up here, thank you.
Okay.
Evening.
Okay.
Your testimony about to give the board in this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the-
Absolutely.
I know you want to tell me that, but you swear the testimony about to give the board in this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the chisabi?
Absolutely. Okay, my name is Francis Noel. I live at Fort Frank Avenue, I am across the street from the proposed subdivision. I'd like to read a letter, I'd like to put it in to testimony. Um, what, what is a bulk variance?
Who drafted the letter?
I did.
Oh, okay.
What is a bulk variance?
What is it?
Yeah. In the application, it says bulk, a bulk variance at future time. What is it, and what is it for?
At a future time?
Yeah, I can get the, where's my-
The bulk variances that have been requested, ma'am, here typically most important dimensional requirements that the zone requires, lot area, lot width.
Okay.
Lot depth.
They didn't specify that.
They don't, they don't have to, they don't have to define what, what a bulk variance means, they just have to tell you what bulk they're looking for.
Okay.
Which they did.
Okay. Now, briefly looking at the plans, it appears the intent of the proposal would be to change the topography substantially. Am I correct? They're going to fill in an area?
I don't know.
What we have is just a typical home construction. Whenever you build a house, you have to grade around the house. Uh, so, yeah, some areas will be cut, some areas will be filled, just a typical home construction.
How much fill is required? How much fill will be required?
Well, it depends on, um, was, which, uh, which lot is your lot, Lot One or Lot Fourteen?
Well, you have the plans, I don't.
I'm not sure which, uh, homes. Are you on the corner of Eugene and Frank?
I am on Fort Frank Avenue. I'm across the street from the-
I just wanna, if, if you want me to make a reference in the area where your home, I can give you, because it's a very long lot, so, uh, it varies.
Are you on the corner of Adams and Frank?
Yes.
Okay, so she's Lot Fourteen.
So, within that vicinity, I would say the average, uh, depth or a, average fill in that area, right on the common property line between the future Lot ten point oh one and ten point oh three, will be about somewhere between three to four feet.
How much is required for that?
I'm not sure.
How much fill is required for the three or four feet? That's what she's looking.
How much fill in general?
In general. How many, how many dump trucks you bringing in? Is that what you want to know?
That's true, I want to know how many dump trucks it's bringing in.
We, we did not get into that, we did not calculate that, you know, that's, uh, you're talking about earthwork quantities and-
Okay.
That's down the road.
Excuse me, but if you don't mind, I'd like to read this first, and then you can answer my letters. Do you mind? Now, this proposal is not only gonna change the topography, it is also going to change and endanger the houses and land that are currently under siege by the creek, which is, which everybody thinks is a little creek, and it is, except, as you may not realize, this particular area has had several water conditions. A surface storm drained wa-melting snow from Highway Nine, from the New Jersey Parkway as well. In addition, drainage on multiple levels from surface water melting and snow, to storm drain water melting snow from Borden Town Middlesex County Road and from the New Jersey State Parkway. Additionally, the surface runoff, water melting snow from Eugene and Adam Boulevard. During the rain, both light and heavy, there is a cause of a massive surge in the water table, including extensive erosion of the creek and the creek walls due to a system feeding to this area. We have several systems, heavy-duty, feeding into this area. Additionally, in the past, when the topography was disturbed, as proof of erosion capabilities, a road was extended to the Methodist Church, which it used to be on Frank Avenue. The road, after a head-start program, had a cata- catastrophic collapse, trapping all of the occupants and made the area inaccessible to emergency vehicles at that time. Rescue efforts were needed to be made with the permission of the New Jersey State Parkway. This was a statewide media event, I don't know how many of you saw it, and all of the major networks were asking for questions as to how this could have happened. It was later discussed by the state and county township in the aftermath, that the erosion was not containable at all. It was called a, quote, sinkhole, large in size. Therefore, an access road was needed to be built behind the church, and the roadway crossing creek was repurposed for only foot traffic and emergencies. A grid of the storm damages also failed twice due to the volume of the water from all the sources converging at the same time. The proposed curbing and double driveway that is on the lot nearest the creek will redirect the water right into the emergency exit for the head-starting church, again making it a hazard and undermine the current structures. The sewage drain runoffs were specifically calculated and placed, and that placement was critical. We actually have three storm drains in front of our home, two on the opposite side of the street, one on my side of the street. It is noticed that all drainage from the mentioned roadways, Route Nine, Middlesex County, Borden Town Avenue, New Jersey State Hot Parkway, Eugene Boulevard, Frank Avenue, all funnel into this creek. This means that the oil, gas, salt, calcium chloride, or any other pollutants go into this creek. From the personal experience, my family has been evacuated from our home at one point. There was a gas fire when a trailer overturned. The gas leaking went down through the sewer system, and the sewer system was on fire. That's why we had to evacuate. It continued on down to the creek. It, it stayed as a fire until it gradually petered out, and the fire department finally was able to, to subdue it. There are many springs in this area, along with the predominantly clay area. Introducing a non-indigenous mix of soil could prove to be disastrous. The erosion will be disastrous. The springs will find new paths and, into new places and send water to new places. Recently, there has been a surge of illegal dumping of tons of unknown soil into the Gully Creek area without authorization to stop the erosion from surrounding homes, basically starting at the Borden Town Avenue area. Once the township was made aware, recommendations were put in place. I understand professionals did the recommendations. However, the damage was already done, and all the trees were suffocated, and erosion continues once again. This was done in the summer. The erosion is only getting worse, it's not getting better. We do have pictures of it if you so require. Who will be monitoring this ground destruction, reconstruction, rather? Where will it take the soil from an aggregate form? Where will the fill, will the fill be safe and long-term solid ground? I understand there's supposed to be a large wall. Will the buyers be made aware of the wall erosion and the conditions of the creek currently, including toxicology? They'll be right next to it. Will they be made aware of the level of the creek, how it can easily rise to five feet during a storm? Many people don't know that. When this was delineated, the girls that came to delineate it came on a nice, warm, sunny day. The creek is very small, you can hardly see it at that point in time. The township does not have the public official resources nor management to carry out a proposed development that, that, with a safety of this size in a critical, unstable residential area. I'm referring simply to the creek area, and as I said, I've experienced it already. As a suggestion, working with a lay-of-the-land approach, would it be more practical to build one house, keeping design size within the surrounding area away from the creek? This would hopefully limit the amount of exposure to potential issues. I don't know what knowledge or experience the members of the board have to make a decision on this variance. I know you're all professional people, and the only one I know is Jay. That's because he's listened to me many times when we have, when we have had water problems. Now, I've been here for fifty-one years. I've seen a lot, and I haven't even put a lot into this note, but I do hope this information will make an informed, practical re-decision. I hope it can help you make a decision based on what you see. I suggest before you gar, you, before you authorize this subdivision, you look at what is down in that gully. Go and look down in the gully, don't look from the top of it. There's a totally different perspective when you look from the top. Now, I also can provide, uh, news articles and photographs of the destruction of the creek I, and, and the past and currently, if necessary. I also reserve the right to give a rebut if necessary, if there's any adverse reactions from the board. Now, I haven't done too much, but this particular item that I have here, this was built on the opposite side, on my side of the property, and this particular cement barricade here, I'm going to give you this. This cement barricade here had a riprap that was all the way up here, like this. It was all filled in. This is the erosion from that point in time. Now, that's just the part of the creek, this is where they have the pipes coming out from some of the storm drains. It's definitely an issue. Please, please take it into consideration. And that's all I have to say.
Do you want to make that photograph part of the record?
I'm going to give, I'm going to give this to you. I have many more. I have, uh, the sinkhole, I have-
I just wanted, I just wanted to ask if you want to make that part of the record?
Yes, please. Yes, please.
Is that in your note? Part of the record?
Yes, please.
I just want to make that O-one. We'll mark it O-one. It has no patients on the back, you aware of that?
No, that just came through. If you notice, there's, there's a, a line delineating where the things were.
All right, so we'll make that part of the record.
All right, I, I just feel I want everybody to be safe.
Can I say something?
No, please don't. Don't, don't.
We don't, we don't really take letters, because we heard you-
She does all the talk.
Testimony is from-
He doesn't hear. He doesn't hear.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Um, so, we've heard your testimony, it's not necessary to introduce the letter into evidence, since your testimony is consistent with the letter, correct?
That's correct.
So, you can keep the letter, we don't need that, because you've already made a record of it.
All right.
All right.
Also, um, because of the clay and, and so on, there's definitely an erosion problem.
You want the letter?
There should be, uh, core samples done, and I understand there's erosion, an erosion expert in Freehold. I don't know what it entails, but that's what I was told.
Okay, so-
Keep it.
All right, we'll take, we'll take the letter, we'll make it O-two.
As I said, I just want people safe.
Anything else, ma'am?
That's it, what can I say? You can call me anytime if you have any questions.
I will. Anybody else under the public like to speak about this? Is there anybody else under the public that would like to speak about this? If not, I'd like to take a motion to close the public.
Make that motion?
You get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right. Mr. Sacks, would you like to close?
Yes, thank you, and just, just briefly, I appreciate the comments of, uh, of the neighbor at Fort Frank Avenue, but I, I will indicate to the board, uh, that, uh, we did provide a letter of interpretation from the NJDEP, which is valid. We applied for floodplain approval, which is pending. Um, obviously, if there's an issue with that, we're not building any of these houses. And, um, I just note for the record that Mr. Cornell obviously has addressed eleven separate comments in his report about soil erosion, and, uh, and certainly we're gonna comply with that. So, uh, although the, the comments may be valid about what's happening off-site, not on our property, somewhere else, um, you know, certainly we, we will comply with any, any state agencies that require us to do anything other than what needs to be done, and certainly with whatever the township requires. And if the, uh, application has acted favorably at the time of construction, there'll be a further scrutiny with respect to soil erosion. So, uh, in essence, uh, my summation would be that, uh, this is an application that, uh, is entirely consistent with the neighborhood, uh, but for the fact that we've got an existing house on this property, uh, that has a pre-existing non-conformity, uh, we wouldn't be seeking any, any variances whatsoever. Uh, that's not something we can control, but I think this application is entirely consistent with what you have in the neighborhood today. I think it will certainly be an improvement, uh, it will certainly help real estate values in the area. We're gonna have two new houses, uh, on that block. Um, the applicant is gonna continue to live at the one Frank Avenue property, he's actually seated back there, he's a teacher, uh, so he's got a vested interest in making sure that this is a nice project. So, I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman. I requested the board act favorably on this application.
All right, you've heard the testimony of the applicant, what's your pleasure?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
The house closest to the crossway, is there gonna be any type of retaining wall or anything, does that affect? Because there is a house across the way that's likely to fall into this crossway.
Yeah, is that, is that uninhabitable right now?
Yeah, is that, is that uninhabitable right now? Is there going to be a retaining wall?
Yes, there's going to be a retaining Yes. There will be a retaining wall, yes.
Any other questions of the professional? This time, I will take a motion from someone.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the application and grant the two existing variances.
I appreciate that, do I have a second? We have a motion to accept the two subdivisions and to the two variances that sit on the existing lot with the house.
Second?
I have a first and a second, do I have any questions on that? If not, I'll have a roll call vote.
Mr. Kevich?
As long as they're going to comply with the state requirements for any soil erosion requirements that are necessary. I've played in that creek, so I know what it is, I, you know. And it, there's a lot of runoff there, so, uh, something that you got to consider on that third property. And as long as you'll remediate or do whatever is necessary to fix that, it can be quite expensive. My vote is to approve it.
Councilman Delina?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly? Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. McEnone?
Yes.
Ms. O'Leary?
Uh, yes, and I just want to reiterate what Mr. Hudekovich said, that it does sound very concerning, but I guess you have to trust the experts and what they say you'll conform with, so that's enough.
Chairman Tai?
And I'd like to thank our professionals for looking into this, I know the area quite well. It's, uh, kind of a problem area that everybody seems to be bouncing back and forth between the state and the Parkway and the county with all the different roads and the different, um, influences of water that come to that area. So I'd like to thank our planner and, and our engineer for their due diligence to make sure that this is done right, and I vote yes.
Application approved.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much, thank you for your patience, Stephen.
You weren't ready for that one, all right. That's the two, do we have any old business, new business, or administrative matters? Um, we have an administrative matter where we will be, uh, our next meeting will be canceled. Yes.
Canceled?
There's no meeting next week?
No. There's no cases, no cases.
That's why we did double time tonight, Mike, yeah, we did that.
Do we need a motion to open to the public? Anybody in the public like to say anything before we close? Make a motion to close the public? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like, I got a second to adjourn, we will adjourn at twenty after nine, thank you very much, it's pretty late. Long as we've been here a long time. Thank you very much, thanks for showing up.
Yeah, exactly.
Sounds good to me.
Sacks played us like a feather, yeah.
She may have to sit here the whole time. Yeah, well, I'll tell you what
Passing it.
But I wasn't here, I wasn't here when
I was, I was sick that I had a
In Nookley Holiday.
He's going to be sick when he has to come
Walmart day.
Going to do an all-inclusive? Yeah.
No, it's too expensive.